And therefore, we are convening the meeting at 6:04.
Yep.
The meeting is called to order. And we will, I hope you have reviewed the agenda and are ready to approve the agenda or make a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as printed or as submitted.
I have a motion to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
The prior minutes have been sent out to you in plenty of time. If you have a chance to review it, I need a motion to deal with the minutes of June 2nd, uh, June 6th. What is your pleasure? I need a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as published.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 6th as published. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Under no business, we will conduct a public, a board public hearing to receive comment on an application for a minor subdivision from Mr. Tim and Elizabeth Becker, the trustees for the property. It is a minor subdivision for property on East Hill Road. The prints have been published and we had a preliminary review of that last meeting, as you may remember.
Yeah.
Mr. Deacon is here on behalf of the applicant and will have, will answer questions whenever we may ask him. Do we have any questions? I have, I have a couple of prints that you can have a look at.
That's where I had a question.
I have a question for you, Bill.
Now that's blown up.
There's a bigger one here.
What is their intended use for this?
Same size, I'm sorry.
They are going to consider applying for a building permit for a small house on lot two because it has a lovely view and they've not decided what to do with lot one.
Good. I was up there before our deluge and, I mean, they've just like destroyed the entire thing. I mean, the entire property. I was just really curious as to what their plans were for it. I can't imagine what it's like now that the flood happened because there was massive ditches and, I mean, the logging was, it wasn't logging, it was just, you know, just decimated. Did they, are they aware of the situation up there?
My sense is that they have people who are working up there and so they're in contact with them, so.
Okay. Anything else that we need to know? We generally don't question the owner's plans to do whatever they'd like as long as the application conforms to the requirements of this.
Yeah, I'm not questioning them, I'm just asking what they're planning on doing with it.
Yeah, I understand. It's a natural thing. I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not impinging on the owners total freedom to do whatever they like, within the law, of course. We've had the preliminary hearing before, the preliminary review. There weren't any questions that I can remember that remained unanswered. Do we have any questions that we don't have the answers to now? I believe the application conforms to the requirements of the, of the regulation. And if you have no questions that are not answered or have no concerns that need to investigate, I need a motion to approve the issuance of a permit of us, a minor subdivision permit for Mr. and Mrs. Becker.
I move that we approve the motion for the minor subdivision.
Okay. I have motion to approve the issuance of a subdivision permit for a minor subdivision of lands on East Hill. Is there further discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Well, I don't hear any opposition, so I am assuming that the motion is adopted. I will write the permit and issue it to the, to the applicants and to Mr. Deacon, his agent, and we'll be, we'll go with that, okay? Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deacon.
We will need a mylar copy.
Pardon?
We will need a mylar copy.
Oh, yeah, I think Mr. Deacon knows that we need, before we assign the permit, we also need a mylar of the, of the print that was submitted.
Yes.
I don't know what they're doing anymore.
Haven't taken care of that. The next item on the agenda is that we will reconvene a recessed public hearing on Mr. Sherman's application. But you should know that Mr. Sherman has informed us that he is withdrawing his application since it is his interpretation of the newly passed state law that he doesn't need a permit. I also need to inform you that the town's attorneys have an opinion which conforms to what Mr. Sherman has alleged. The opinion of our, the town's attorney is that, let me read the pertinent part of that statement in the opinion. It says, "It is our opinion that H270 severely limits municipal authority over cannabis cultivators, and the applicant is correct that he is no longer required to obtain initial use approval from the town for outdoor cannabis cultivation." That's the opinion we have from the town's attorney.
Excuse me, can I ask a question, Joe?
Pardon?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
That was outdoor cannabis. If you are in a greenhouse, that's indoor.
The, Mr. Sherman's application is for an outdoor cannabis cultivation.
Isn't a greenhouse indoor?
Not by the Cannabis Control Board's definition.
Apparently, there's a, there's a, some language that says, "As long as there's minimal lighting indoors in order to propagate the, or keep the plants alive, it is considered So that's the legal opinion we are, we are dealing with here. And what I need this board to do is to recognize that Mr. Sherman has withdrawn his application, that we have no application before us to deal with, and we will take no further action. And I need a motion from somebody to recognize that the application has been withdrawn and no further action will be taken. Questions?
The purpose of the motion?
The purpose of the motion is to recognize that we no longer have an issue before us.
I'll make a motion that we recognize the permit has been withdrawn and we have no further action on this permit process.
Is it possible to ask a question before that goes forward?
Pardon?
Is it possible to ask a question before that goes forward?
The motion has been made, there is a discussion, you may ask a question.
I'm confused because the, his property is zoned residential, so doesn't there have to be a conditional variance to have agriculture in an area that is zoned for residential?
You may know that the entire area of the town has been classified as R1, which is residential only. However, in our regulations, there's language also that very specifically states that agriculture, farming, is not required to have any sort of permit or restrictions applied about it by any of the municipal regulations. That's in our, in our zoning ordinance as well. So it's an exception that seems to recognize that the state says, if it's agriculture, if it's farming, it does not require to be conformed to any of the regulations of not only the state but also the municipalities. Okay? Any other questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question.
Sure. Would you identify yourself, please?
Sure. My name is Tony DiGuglielmo. I'm the oldest child of Tony and DiGuglielmo. You've been communicating with them over the last few months and they wanted to tune in tonight, but they weren't able to. And I just wanted to confirm, you received a letter from Peter Raymond, the attorney? And did you receive it?
I did receive a letter, a three-page letter from Mr. Raymond, the attorneys for your parents, apparently.
Yes.
And he makes certain allegations and claims that I have submitted to our attorney, who does not believe that they're, they have any merit because it does not address the issue that outdoor cannabis growing does not require a permit at all from either the state or, it's regulated by the, by the Department of Agriculture, but it requires no state, no permits from the local municipality.
What would be considered indoor cultivation?
Well, I don't, I'm not familiar with the, with the differences. I do know that Mr. Sherman's application is for outdoor cultivation. Okay. Any other questions? Dr. Lemay.
Susan Lemay. So going back to the greenhouse and outdoor cultivation issue, and perhaps, Dustin, you can clarify this a little bit. My reading of the Cannabis Control Board's interpretation of their own rule is that a greenhouse structure that has any kind of artificial lighting is considered to be indoor cultivation, regardless of the 180-day rule. Now, maybe you have exception to that, but that's my reading of that. I queried the Cannabis Control Board on that and they chose not to clarify further.
Well, you may know that the Cannabis Control Board has been terminated.
No, the Advisory Board has been terminated.
Well, I suppose you're, you're right. The, the information that we have is that cannabis cultivation is considered farming, period. And what that means is farming as a general rule in the state of Vermont does not require specific permits. If you want to build a barn, all you have to do is make sure that the barn is 30 feet from, from your property line. You can build it anywhere you want, you can build any size you want, and you could build it in any way to suit your purposes. It is not subject to any regulation. That is our understanding of what farming is and of what the regulations for farming are. So for us to say, I don't know what the difference is between indoor and outdoor, all I know is that Mr. Sherman's application to the state is for an outdoor cannabis growing venture. That's, that's all we need to know because that is what informs the, any potential issues that we make.
Has Mr. Sherman presented his license to you from the Cannabis Control Board?
I have not.
Not required to.
Pardon? Go ahead.
Not required to.
You're not required?
I'm not required to provide my license to the township.
Are you listed on the, on the state website as having a license for cannabis cultivation?
I'm not going to answer any questions here. Honestly, I'm okay with you guys, but the way that this whole thing's gone down and the letter full of misinformation and lies in the meeting.
Well, this is, this states that you need a license.
Yeah.
So where do I go to verify that you have a license?
Go to the Cannabis Control Board.
Okay, thank you.
But the way that this has happened has been absolutely ridiculous. Misinformation about what I'm doing and riling up the town. This has been absurd, I followed their rules and regulations. Susan Lemay, Tony DiGuglielmo, the environmental authorities on me, which I'm actually very happy they did because they were telling them, I don't know if any of you are aware of this, but they were telling them the same stuff, you know, sediment runoff, erosion control, three to four acres clear cut, which are meaning I clearly stated that I did not cut three to four acres and her up here stating four acres, 180,000 square feet. The guy came out, look, there's the report, I have it, 1.6 acres cleared. No, no problems down. I was investigated by the state and, you know, so I don't really have much interest in continuing these conversations. I know people have gone about it the way they wanted to and that's unfortunate. I wish it wouldn't have happened that way. I wish that the meeting here that happened, I was unaware of that letter that was sent out. The letter is ridiculous, like absolutely ridiculous. The complete, the 4,600 gallons of water a day? It's insane, insane. The lights, that's not what I'm doing. That whole letter is not what I'm doing. So, and now, you know, I had informed Susan Lemay that this was going to happen. She knew about H270. And still, they chose to send that letter out, still, they're saying, I'm doing these things, and I just wanted to be known that it's not what I'm doing. And I don't really know what else to say. I'm going to move forward with what I'm doing. The state, they, they looked at this 1.6 acres, the agricultural area is a little under 10 acres, three quarters of acres of, you know, had there been over an acre cleared for our own site, that would have required a permit, but I didn't do that. All these things that they're talking about, I've been aware of all of them.
Okay.
I have some other people that want to, their hands up, would you mind?
Of course.
Go ahead, sir.
I guess I should, Jean-Luc Serre from 1206 North Hill Road. Can I presume that the zoning board has no authority to audit, to verify in fact that what is being built in actuality is in fact what is being authorized? In other words, who, who minds the store? Who's, who, who has the responsibility of auditing?
Well, you're, you're right to ask. The fact of the matter is, no one runs the store.
I'm sorry?
No one runs the store. We, as a municipality, have no authority to regulate any farming activity, any building activity on the farm, as long as it doesn't infringe on the neighbor's property. And since the state has designated cannabis cultivation as farming, farming is a, an activity that has very large latitude in how it can conduct its business because that's what is traditionally been assumed to be farming. Cannabis has been included in that definition and that's where we are. We have no authority to do anything.
That does not quite answer my question. My question has to do with who verifies, who validates that what is actually implemented is in fact what is purported to be. In other words, who checks that in fact this is an indoor qualifies ultimately as implemented, as outdoor, is in fact a, an indoor cultivation?
That would be up to the Agriculture Department of the state.
Okay, so they, they have their, their required rules that they, that they have to, that any farmer has to apply for or conform to, but that's something the state needs to, needs to verify. And they do this once? Do they, do they do this on an ongoing basis of, you know, technically auditing for a lot of activities is done on a, you know, sort of regular, semi-regular basis?
Yeah.
Is there any precedent or, that you're aware of as far as the state?
I, I do not know, sir, how the Department of Agriculture conducts its business.
It's the Cannabis Control Board. You're welcome to call them and tell them to come out and investigate me if you'd like.
Okay.
Call whoever from the state and tell them to come in and investigate me.
Well, no, I understand, just I wasn't quite sure whether the town had any.
I'm the Cannabis Control Board.
The town does have.
Yeah, we, as you know, I mean, obviously you, you have seen that my difficulty is that I have to get my head around the fact that a municipal, municipality has no role in controlling any of the activities of farming. So that, it is a new concept for me as well and I'm having some flashbacks to the good old days. You had another question?
So regarding H270, one of the last meetings of the Cannabis Control Board in May prior to the passive enactment stressed to the licensees that the, the bill had not undergone any judicial scrutiny. If we remember Schoolhouse Rock, you know, the legislature passes, makes the laws and the judiciary ends up interpreting them. So I think bowing down to the Cannabis Control Board's interpretation of H270, to anybody else's, your legal, your legal representation, Tony's legal representation is pending.
I, and I, I'm well aware that we live in a litigious society and anything may be litigated. There's no question. What I am saying, however, is that for the current state of knowledge that we have, we are advised by our legal beagles that we have no input on how farms are being conducted.
Certainly, if, if you take a look at the letter from Peter Raymond, the attorney that was received.
I have read that.
Yeah. Has everybody on the board had a chance to read that?
I was unable to have it published to all of the members.
I'd like to read it, that's for sure.
And you will get it.
Thank you.
I will make sure that you get everything that I have gotten.
Thank you.
Not only from, from Mr. Raymond, but also from our attorneys who have issued a couple of things in addition to the original opinion. You'll have all of that. Timeline was just a little bit too close. In fact, I did send out the, the opinion of the, of the town attorneys this afternoon.
Yeah, I got that, I got that, thank you.
So it, it was late, I was, I was having other issues to take care of, but you'll have all of those.
Thank you.
But for now, I think you have something.
Well, yes. So I, I think if you review Mr. Raymond's letter and if you review your regulations, even in light of H270, you do have the ability to regulate greenhouses and...
That is not true.
That, you believe that is not true.
No, it's not true.
Greenhouses are classified as private structures.
According to the town's attorney, we cannot regulate outdoor activities.
That's not outdoor activities, sir, that's an indoor activity.
No, it isn't. There's clear regulations.
Mr. Sherman.
Have a good night, I'm done listening to this nonsense. Have a good one.
You have plans to represent yourself here tonight, Dustin? I suggest you take it.
Okay. So this is where we are, is our, our attorneys have advised us in certain ways and we will conform to that opinion. And before we go any further, I think what I will do is adjourn the public hearing, which we just reconvened, so that we can get to the pending motion that is on the floor for the boards to vote on.
Can I ask one question before you do that?
I'm sorry, what's the motion, sir?
Go ahead.
So if he, if he, if he pulled that back, do we have no say on when in the morning he can start making noise with his machines? Can you do it at 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, or is there a time? Is there any stipulation you can put on it?
There may, I don't know if the state has any noise, ordinances or anything. I know the town does not.
Okay.
And in order to enforce the noise ordinance, you'd have to invest in equipment to monitor the noise, and so that's something the select board would have to.
I can, I can have that, I mean, I'm right there. I mean, he's jake breaking, they're jake breaking at 4:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning on a... on a private --
As I said, it is unclear to me that the state has any noise ordinances. I do not. I know for a fact that the town does not have a noise ordinance. So that your concern would have to be addressed to the state level if there is such an ordinance.
I feel like Mr. Wagner's coming down Marfield at 4:00 in the morning.
Okay. With that, I am going to announce that at 6:35, the public hearing has been adjourned, and we will address the pending motion that was made concerning Mr. Sherman's withdrawal of the application and the fact that we will take no further action on the issue. That's the motion before you. Is there further discussion on that? If not, I will ask all of you to say yes if you want to adopt the motion.
Yes.
Yes.
All of you no that do not want to adopt the motion. I do not hear any nos. I assume the motion has been adopted unanimously. Thank you. And with that, we have a public comment, period, at any meeting. And you can tell us how well or badly we have done in our job.
If I may get -- Just to summarize, it sounds to me like, basically, it is, there is nothing. You're not approving, not disapproving anything. You're simply recognizing the fact that this withdrawn this application, Mr. Sherman's application.
Correct.
And that's all.
That is correct. Yeah, we, basically, we have no role in either approving or disapproving anything in this particular case.
Okay. So which means that any further action will have to be, anything else will have to be taken up at the state level?
Any further action would be if Mr. Sherman wanted to submit anything that does require a permit, like if he wants to build a house, he needs to obtain a building permit, that type of thing. That skill is -- As long as it's not a barn. If it's a house for people to live in, he needs a permit. And in his greenhouses, he has to meet these certain setback requirements under our zoning regulations. Yeah, that's true. He needs to be 30 feet away from the neighbor's yard, from the neighbor's home. But that is the only thing that survives the designation of a farming operation. Thank you for coming.
I have a question as a member of the public.
Sure.
Just for clarification.
Yeah.
Because I think we've heard over the last few months that there is a lot of misperception as far as our town being zoned residential. And the implication that it would stay residential, which when you understand it, it's -- I guess my question is, is there any way we can limit where agriculture is conducted?
No, no.
Okay.
No. And that goes back to not only state statute, but also what we have in our own zoning ordinance. If you begin, if you look at the beginning of it, it states very clearly that farming is exempt from all regulations.
So hypothetically, I could, if I have an empty lot next to my property, somebody could open a feedlot there?
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
And that's?
As long as you get the state to approve it. And, you know, because you still have to comply with the state's agricultural department regulations for farms. They have what's called, I forget what the term is. It's a set of rules.
Required agricultural practices.
What are they?
Required agricultural practices.
That's the way. You're right. I thank you for supplying my memory. They have those rules, and those would apply to anybody that wants to do farming. So, yeah. Basically, and you're right. Way back when, in, I think it was 1972, we adopted the zoning ordinance for the first time. And it was very deliberate that the whole town was going to be designated R1, family houses only, individual farm homes. But we also recognized at the time that there were, in fact, that existed at the time, things that were being done that were not residential. Like there was a gas station under 11. So we generated a list of, what we called conditional uses, that would be permitted anywhere in town with a permit. And that would be, the process would be saying, okay, if you want to do it there, these are certain rules that you have to follow. That's part of the conditional use process. So it has worked fairly well all this time. 1972, my son is 50 years old. It is, that was when he was born. Yes, ma'am.
So this town has a lovely town plan from 2018.
Right.
Full of aspirations and, in some cases, proposed regulations or stated as regulations. And yet, to the best of my knowledge, the zoning board has chosen not to act on any of those items with the possible exception, and I'm not even sure it was included, of the short-term rentals, which I understand involved a lot of work on your apartment. It was highly appreciated that you made some action regarding that. This is no longer 1972 by about five decades.
Yes, tell me about it.
We all recognize that. And, you know, hopes and dreams and R1 zoning, I just don't think it's going to continue to cut it in the future. Recently, and I told, recently, there was a lot for sale right over here between Mary Williams and Rob's House, nice 3-acre lot along the river. There was, and is, nothing to prevent someone from putting a hog farm there or setback-to-setback cannabis farm. Now, if that's how you want your town to grow, and my town too, you know, I'm disappointed. And I would charge you as a citizen to really look at what you need to do to allow this town to have reasonable growth and avoid future skirmishes like this, because they will come. In fact, if you look at the cannabis lobbying groups, not only nationally, but within the state, they actually give people directions on how to establish a cannabis farm, find a town that doesn't have zoning. Honest to God, it's there. Okay? And, you know, whether it's a hog farm, they decide a hog farm or cannabis or whatever is around the next corner, this is going to come to hand over. And, you know, I'm not very happy that this is right over my quarter-mile-long property line. He's going to pay essentially no taxes, okay? I cannot imagine that anybody having the choice to buy any other lovely property in the state of Vermont is going to want to buy mine when there are other options. And, you know, I'm just, that's my supposition. I've tried to find backup from that from the Realtor associations, and all that they can say is that it's too early to tell how cannabis grows are going to affect real estate values. They can tell you that if you are next to the cannabis retail outlet, that you will at least not lose money on your property, and it may appreciate. But they have no information regarding what's going to happen to surrounding real estate values. And I think since my tax dollars are helping to support this town, that perhaps I need a revaluation of my property. Anyway, that's what I've said.
Thank you. It is a conceptual conversation that says maybe the town and the townspeople ought to look at. The statements they make in the town plan are very philosophical. They're a very positive outlook and all that. But if we want to make sure that some of the things that we do not want to happen do not happen, we need to adopt regulations that prevent them very specifically. And what comes with it is a mechanism to enforce it. So it becomes a very similar to the short-term regulation which we wrestled with a lot. Enforcement is basically what everybody stumbles on. How do we enforce it? And who do we pay to enforce it? So, but anyway. Any further public discussion? This is the part of the agenda that we're in. Public input. Tell us what we should know or tell us goodbye.
Whose idea was it to start working on North Hill and digging the site? And the North Hill was going to be basically closed for a month?
I have no idea.
Because when that started?
It's the Highway Department. I have no idea.
They started the first couple of days, and we got very little rain. In the very bottom of that, right where it goes to East Hill, with a huge puddle, very little rain. Before we got out of it?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Well?
I'm not involved.
You want a public opinion? And I'm giving it.
Actually, that's, the public opinion you should go to is to the select board.
Okay.
Because that's where the answers would be.
Okay.
But I will tell you, Charlie Golden, who's a road foreman, in my opinion, has done an extraordinary job for this town in keeping the roads as passable as they are. And I'm always grateful that he is as good as he is, so I'm very happy. Anyway, with that, and with no more public input, the meeting is adjourned at 6:47.